Board meeting to order, please. We will have a moment of silent meditation. All right, have a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Manager, go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number three on the agenda is for action, adoption of agenda as presented or amended.
All right. Can we have a motion on consent agenda? Can't we do all three of these one time, Mr. Lawyer?
First, we need to adopt a motion. And then, yes, you can do the consent agenda.
I thought you two could, I didn't know about that.
Sure.
All right, can we have motion adoption of Knight's agenda?
So moved.
Do the second?
I'll say.
All right, second by Christine. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. All right, we have now the consent agenda. And we, I'm gonna ask for a motion on all three items. Let me see. We can do that, can't we? Yeah.
Yes.
Can we have a motion for the items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Then moved in second that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. We approve consent agenda.
Item number five on the agenda is public comment. This agenda item is for information. Members of the public are invited to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic. Please come forward to the podium and identify yourself so that your statements can be taped. Three minutes per person, five minutes per group. If anyone wishes to speak later in the meeting on a listed agenda item, please state your name and the agenda item, and you will be recognized at that time. Action on items brought up during the public comment period will be at the discretion of the Board. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers will address all the comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual Commissioner. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed.
All right, if you'd like to be heard.
Good evening. I'm Edison Midget. And I come here this evening to thank you for the honor that you bestowed upon me. I was invited to go out for a luncheon on Dyer days. Thought I was going to outeat some shrimp, which I eventually did. But I got en route, I was, my daughter said, "I'd like to go by the boat shop for just a minute for something." And I walked in and I had no idea what I was going for. And I never realized anything until I saw all, I think, ever member of my family just about in attendance. And I suspected something, I still didn't know what it might be. So I wanted to tell you. I was totally surprised. And I kinda felt like the story of the prodigal son. His comments to his father was, "I'm not worthy." And that's exactly how I felt when I received this honor from you. But I come here this evening to thank you so much I appreciate it, and it wasn't totally surprise. I want to also thank you for your service. I'm not one that ever aspired to public office, but I've never been indifferent to things political. And so I'm here not just to thank you for the honor you bestowed upon me, but I'm here to thank you for your service. And I'm proud to be a citizen of this town. And thank you again. God bless.
Thank you, Edison. Edison, you and I have seen a lot of changes in Manio. I said, "You and I have seen a lot of changes in Manio." I'm right behind you.
Quite a few. I graduated high school here in 19.3.
Oh, yeah, congratulations. Well deserved. Anyone else?
It's my name is Jason Schultz. I just, I wanna talk about the public hearing coming next, so from what you said, that's, I can just tell you that, right? I'll wait until that item is up.
Anyone else? Tim?
I'm also gonna save my comment for the next hearings for the public comment as well.
Anyone else? All right, I'll ask one more time, anyone else? Well, we declare the public comment period closed.
Next on the agenda, item six. Now we move from public comment to an official public hearing. This particular item is for information purposes. It is on the proposed text amendment for B1 and B2 districts to add to section 7-5-29 the words Tattoo Parlors/Studio in the B1 district and section 8-5-42 Tattoo Parlors/Studio in District B2. If I may call attention to the members of the Board of Commissioners and the audience present, please note that there has been a correction on that section 8-5. It's 8-5-42, not 8-5-41 as shown in the agenda. So in order for us, in order for the public hearing to take place, there would need to be motions and votes both to enter the public hearing and to, and to close the public hearing.
All right. Can we have a motion to open the public hearing as to the Tattoo Parlors/Studio?
I make a motion to open public hearing for text amendments for B1 and B2 zones.
Second.
Second by Hannah. All right. You've heard the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. We now declare the public hearing open for discussion.
So I'm Jason Schultz, I live at 308 Upper Walk. We own some rental properties in downtown, commercial and residential. And if you don't know, I was, my wife and I were the ones that put this application in for the tattoo parlors. And the main reason we did that is we had someone, a possible applicant to, a renter to use one of our spots. And when we found out that it wasn't an approved business, we lost that person because of the timeframe it takes to go through this process. So we thought we'd go ahead and apply for it, see if we could get it approved, so at some point down the road, if someone wanted to do it, they would be able to, if approved. So. And another thing I wanted to just say about that was tattoos are, I feel like tattoos are not, it's not the stigma that it used to be 25, 30 years ago. There's people nowadays, grandmothers, you know, moms, dads, some people go with their children, children that are of age to get tattoos together. So I just feel like if there's any, in my opinion, people think if there's, it's gonna bring anything bad to the town of Manio, I think that, in my opinion, that's, that's bad, that's incorrect. I think if anything else, it'll, might draw some people to Manio that may not normally come. That's all I have on that. Thank you.
You didn't mention old girlfriends.
We need those covered up.
Tim?
My name's Tim Teepol, I live at 101 Fernando Street. When this first got brought up to my attention, I had some questions. Some questions, I'm wondering if this opens us up to other ordinances. Me, myself, I do have a tattoo, but I went somewhere else to get it, because I understand the stigmata and everything else, such as there's one right across the street. One of the questions that I have is, as we know, one of our ordinance says skateboarders are not allowed to go past Old Tom. Does that mean that ordinance is gonna be lifted too? Because a lot of skateboarders, and I'm not saying it is just stigmata, are probably gonna be down there. What other ones are gonna open up to? As I know, about three years ago, a vape shop, Outer Banks Vape, that opened up on 64, tried to have a spot that was over at Paige Davis's spot. They got turned down because they were told that, because chairs just opened up and having a Catholic coffee shop right next to another one, it would probably not be the Manio way. No questions asked, that person said, "Okay, no problem." I'm just wondering if this opens us up to other situations. I don't know how we went from an area that we had Pirate Adventures with all these kids and everything else, to now we're going to try to get into an Adult More Shop. I thought the long range was we were trying to get more kid-friendly and start bringing in another atmosphere like we did with Pirate's Adventure. If that's changed, then that's one thing. But I don't understand how we've gone from one to another. I approve it in other places, like I said, I have a tattoo myself. Mine says United States Coast Guard, which I was very proud to get whenever I graduated from the Coast Guard Academy. So I understand the point of it, because a lot of people do memorize themselves on their bodies. However, I will say one other thing, is having a meeting on July 3rd with all the merchants downtown right now busy and packed, where they cannot come, also shows something else. Because right now downtown is packed, and a lot of merchants aren't gonna be, have the opportunity to come here on July 3rd. Thank you, thank you very much.
Anyone else?
I'm Angel Corey, I live at 230 Mother Vineyard Road, which is not in the town, but I do own property downtown, including a retail shop, which is not mine, but it's a lease lessee. And so what I would like to talk about, I know that there is not the same stigma about tattoos that there used to be. But when I was on the corridor committee and the bail bondsman business opened on the highway, we got so many calls, we got emails, "How could you let this happen?" Of course, we didn't regulate that, but, you know, people immediately felt like that was not appropriate for the highway, for the impression that it gives to visitors coming here. Now, you know, we want a town that's for ourselves, as well as for our visitors, so hopefully I will never need to get a bond. But there is a place for everything, but they're not, isn't necessarily, you know, I can't remember what Billy Parker always says. Anyway, so I'll skip that. But I wanted to read something from the Institute of Government. It says, "The whole concept of zoning implies a restriction upon the owner's right to use a specific tract for a use profitable to him, but detrimental to the value of other properties in the area, thus promoting the most appropriate use of land throughout the municipality considered as a whole. The police power upon which zoning ordinances must rest permits such restriction upon the right of the owner of a specific tract when the legislative body has reasonable basis to believe that it will promote the general welfare by conserving the values of other properties and encouraging the most appropriate use thereof." And so it's, it's hard for me, because I'm good friends with pretty much everybody in town, including the people who had to turn down a potential tenant, which is tough, I know that. But if I were to rent our shop space to a tattoo parlor, it would hurt my other good friends and neighbors in the shops next door, which would be Sam and Winston and Charlotte's Dress Shop. And so I think that's the dilemma that we have. You know, we'd like every business to be successful, we'd like every property owner to be successful. But sometimes the perception of something, whether it's fair or not, it sort of overrules everything. And the town, when they redid the zoning ordinance, they came up with a new section called specified use provisions. And the statement of intent for that is this article shall provide supplementary regulations for specific uses that by their nature require expanded protections for neighboring properties in the town at large. And there's a whole list of them. One is adult entertainment, another one is pawn shops, internet sweepstakes establishments, telecommunications towers, you know, wind, wind power, lots of good things, some things maybe some other people would have a problem with. I think when we were working on this all that time ago, and the zoning ordinance was approved, nobody really paid too much attention to tattoo parlors. I don't think we even had one in Dare County at that time. So I would just ask you to consider, as the Institute of Government said, promoting the general welfare by conserving the values of other properties and encouraging the most appropriate use thereof. And so for that, all those reasons, I would think that at least in the Village Business District, it would not be appropriate. I'm not sure about B2, just given the reaction of the bail bondsman location, and the fact that things that typically have had a stigma, like pawn shops and adult entertainment and internet sweepstakes, whatever that is, I'm not sure what that even is. Those have a perception in the community that they should not be everywhere, anywhere in town. So I would ask, at the minimum, that you not approve for the Village Business District, as Tim said, you know, we're trying to encourage families and, and Jason's right, I'm sure there are families that go get tattooed. And I find it fascinating, I wrote a story about it, how much ink is used in a square inch. It's amazing to me, but I don't have one, anyway. I'm not opposed to them, but I am opposed to allowing a change in the zoning ordinance that would, I believe, be detrimental to other businesses in the Village Business District. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to be heard? Yes, sir.
Bill Massey, 306 Devon Street here in Manio. My opinion is not informed by any judgment about tattoos or people who have tattoos, and certainly no moral judgment. I just think, as I read the last 20-year study that was done, that Melissa was kind enough to get me a copy of in preparation for moving forward with the study, it occurred to me that the type of businesses that were referenced for being desirable in the downtown district were all family-oriented businesses, in the sense of some specifics that were mentioned were toy store, bakery, things of this nature. In light of that, and in light of the possibility, and seeing a future of a very continuing and increasing business community in the downtown area, I would, I think it is not a good idea to approve this request. Thank you.
Next? All right, anyone else like to be heard? All right, we'll declare the public hearing on tattoos closed.
I'm motioning to come out of public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
All right, then motion, come out of public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, go ahead.
Item number seven on the agenda. This is old business, and it's for action. This is the discussion and consideration of zoning text amendments for the section 7-5-29, which is the B1 district, and 2019, let's see, the section 8-5-41, which is, dash 42, which is the B2 district. So B1 was the Village Business District, and the B2 was the General Business District.
All right, can we, we gotta have a motion to amend it, right?
Yes.
All right, can we get a motion to the amendment as the, presented by the town manager?
Could we, could we table this until we get some more business people to come and give us their comments? I mean, we don't have any, any business people here downtown?
They're all downtown.
They are. Could we table this until our...
What's the feelings of the board?
What was the planning board's recommendation on this?
That's a good question.
The planning board's recommendation was that you all get the public's input. They, they didn't really have strong opinions one way or the other, but they thought that the community should, should be heard.
Okay. I agree with Darrell. Is that a second? Sure. Just to table it?
Just, do we need a motion? If that was an agreement? I don't know if that was an agreement.
I would, I think tabling is fine. Action, in my opinion, must be taken at the September meeting at the latest. And so there's some question about whether setting the public hearing in June is your first consideration, or today is your first consideration?
Right.
I don't know which. Your ordinance requires action within 65 days of your first consideration. So I think it's debatable whether that's August or September. If you table it, you absolutely must take action by the September meeting, if not sooner.
Can you hear something, the board? What do you want to do?
James?
I feel like it would certainly be appropriate to, to talk to the business owners and people in those general areas, residents as well, to at least get some more feedback.
I think, I think we need more feedback, but I don't, but...
I also, I think it's appropriate to ask the applicant, I mean, would, would setting this aside until the September meeting be okay?
I'm gonna agree with Tim on one part, that having it on July 3rd is not unreasonable for anyone. But I mean, we could just keep dragging this out for, I mean, nobody showed up, so.
Well, September would be a deadline.
We have what? How many residents here, five? Seven, maybe?
It's not gonna hurt us to drag it out, because we're not waiting on anybody, so.
Yeah.
It's not dragging it out.
That's all right. To table it, it's not gonna hurt to table it, just because, you know, we're not, someone's not waiting on us to get this approved at this moment.
We just want more input.
You, you don't have any trouble with being tabled?
No.
We don't have, we don't have more options than this.
I don't know if we get much more participation, I guess.
Would you then have to put it in the newspaper for...
Yeah, we'd have to advertise, yeah.
No, you've had your public hearing, and you have to take action within 65 days of your first consideration. So I, I don't think you hold, I mean, you can't, in your discretion, I don't think you're obligated to hold another public hearing.
Just public comment.
And certainly you always have public comment.
What's the feelings of the board? Do you agree with Darrell on tabling?
I mean, I, I do feel like I maybe would like more input, I mean, I don't have, in my opinion, it's just my opinion, because I've not been contacted by, you know, I've not heard from anyone else, so. But, yeah, I mean, I, I would be fine with that, as long as it doesn't hurt Courtney and Jason. And it is something that we have to, I mean, if we, you know, it's gonna be now or later, we still...
It's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be now or later, Christine.
We have to make it.
I did say Christine. I'm still embarrassed about that. You were so different, but...
So our, the next, we would have to take action on this?
September 5th.
That's all right for me, I mean, it's all right.
You want, you want tabled till September 5th?
I would, yeah.
All right, we'll table the proposed tattoo amendment till September 5th at a regular meeting.
I'll make a motion, I guess, to table it, please.
Is it second?
Second.
Okay, motion second, we table the amendment till September 5th, and we will take final action. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Item number eight on the agenda. This is for information purposes. This is the section called Mayor's and Commissioners' Comments.
Nancy, comment?
When is the youth center moving over to the old Kellogg's building?
They were supposed to move today. Now, I don't know, they started moving.
Unless there's been some activity over there, working?
Yeah, I think they're supposed to move today, they moved stuff out of the old building.
Okay.
Don't hold me to it, but that's what Carolyn said.
Other than that, I'm good.
Christine?
I'm good, thank you.
Darrell?
Once again, the P. Island Preservation Society is presenting at the Aquarium on July 11th, at 11:01. And it's about the life and time of Richard Ethers and his P. Island crew. So I invite y'all to show up if you like.
That's it.
Rich?
I'm good.
Andy?
With the discussion about the zoning amendment, to me, I, I think all of us can walk downtown and see a half a dozen businesses that are empty, so I think it's, with getting more input from the business owners, it'd be appropriate to know what we could do to maybe not necessarily veer from the Manio way. And I say it loosely, because we all have different interpretations of that. But maybe get some more input of what we could do to generate some more business in those, in those spots. That's all I have for it.
Hannah?
Melissa, on the DOT and the contractor on the recent paving, have we heard any more news, or? And, and besides that street, I mean, I know you and Fred measured some of the lower grades, but I had a citizen ask me about Wengina one in, I mean, Upper Walk and Bagona, right there?
Yes. I made contact with the local office, and they responded to me that they were sending it on to the district office.
Okay.
And I believe Mr. Ayers has been in communication with them. He has a better update than I do about Wengina, but we're, as far as I'm... He has a better update than I do about Wengina, but we're, as far as I know, still waiting to hear back from the district office on that matter.
And what is that that they sprayed on the road?
We believe it's hydroseed. Hydroseed, grass seed?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And in support of the town planner, town planner's comments, Commissioner, I will, I will acknowledge not only did the town planner contact the local office, we have made a formal written request to the DOT's district office, since certified, because we needed responses both on the, on the Agona Street gate grates of the storm inlet. We had the Wengina Street cores, the material there. We also had punch list and cleanup items, such as the millings and storm inlets and other things. And they had recently been working on cleanup work, but they didn't, we understand they've, they've done the hydroseeding. For those who haven't seen hydroseeding before, it's a combination of grass seed, fibrous mulch, and sometimes fertilizer, as well as green dye, often used in areas that have been disturbed, but whether it be by a grader or other kind of disturbance, trying to get the grass back on that. And it appears that was done by a subcontractor to the contractor hired by DOT. At this point, we haven't had a formal response back from DOT, other than they're working on the issues, but we haven't received any update and we'll continue to follow up with them after our formal written request.
And just one more thing, Melissa, while you're there, on the west side of Agona, where Pizza Hut at that corner, when are we going to do those, that cleaning? Because I know it's getting ready. We've been holding off a lot of rain lately, so.
Yes. I've been in contact with Tri-State Utilities. I have an active purchase order and we are on their schedule for mid-July, so we are expecting them soon to come and clean out those inlets. After they finish their job of cleaning and cambering all of that system, then we'll have the, that section of that drainage area surveyed and then we'll get formal engineer's recommendations about what to do about those problems.
Okay, thank you very much.
And, and we, we expect that once Tri-State comes in and cleans those inlets and those culverts, that we'll see some improvement in the area.
Yeah. Not a river.
Hopefully not.
Hopefully the river will go away. Okay. Thank you very much. No, sir.
All right, I don't have anything.
Can I give the board a brief update on our...
Yeah, yeah.
H-429, our Charlotte Bag Bay bill, passed the House unanimously last week, 113 to zero, which I was very happy and, you know, pleased about. And that's with Representative Hannix's continued support. It's in the Senate now. It will be heard by the Senate Finance Committee on Monday, I believe, Monday afternoon. And Senator Steinberg is on top of it and we're hoping to get a Senate vote by the end of next week. And, you know, we're, we're running towards the end of the session here, so we're pushing hard to get it heard by the Senate and get it passed. But so far, there's been no controversy and a lot of support, so I'm, I'm optimistic.
Okay, good. Anything else come for the board? I don't have anything.
We typically don't have meetings in August for the last dozen years, so if that's what the board continues to want to do unless it's an emergency...
It's up to the board.
Something comes up that a citizen or whatever needs an emergency approval of the board, then that's just a consensus of the board, I believe.
Is that what the board would like to do, not meet in August? I'm new here. I, I work for me with that.
If we don't have anything?
If we don't have anything, yeah.
So I'd leave that up to the town manager, I guess, if he's got something that's pressing.
And Commissioner, right now, we do not have any formal agenda items. We originally had a potential item in August for grant application, but the board, by its action tonight, has allowed us to press forward with two grant applications that would be submitted at the end of August. And that was the only thing currently on our horizon. But I certainly appreciate the, the suggestion that if something does come up that's particularly urgent in terms of town business on behalf of the community, certainly I appreciate the willingness to reconvene, should that be necessary.
Appreciate you burning the midnight oil this, seven, eight, nine days you're putting in.
Sounds like we don't want to have a meeting in August, so we will adjourn. Is anything else coming?
We'll recess, too.
Oh, it's like mid-month, I forgot. We will recess for the work stop. I don't know when it is. What's the date on it?
Seventeenth.
July 17th at 4 o'clock or 4:30 or whenever it is. Meeting adjourned.